Okay, wonderful seeing such a nice ride here tonight. If everyone will stand and we'll have an invitation and Commissioner Phil could give you the last.
Dear God, just thank you for the privilege of being able to gather into this court ice tonight, into a place of freedom and a place of justice and just civic government for all of us. We thank you for all the people that have come here tonight to participate in this process. We ask you to guide each decision made tonight and to make every decision in the best interest of the entire county of Gates and into your kingdom. Ask these things in Jesus' name.
Now, we'll turn and say pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I would like to call a meeting to order for May 18th, 2015. We have no minutes because we approve those at the first of the month, but we have your agenda that is in front of you. We would like to make an adjustment to the agenda under B, the Knights Delegations. Linda Peterson from RCD will be here for a presentation, and I think what we're going to do is we're going to put that as A and the Unites Delegation as B. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion as we approve the agenda spot by. Second.
Okay, a motion has been made and probably second. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed. Okay, can you get me the risk count? Okay, Mr. -- and I just changed the agenda.
Good evening, ma'am. Chairman, thank you very much for the opportunity to present and to the board commissioners. I am Linda Peterson from the Alamo RCD Council, which is based in Edenton, but Gates County has been a member for many, many years. And it is my goal to periodically come before the board commissioners just to give you an update of who we are because the positions on your board change, who we are, what we do, and what we can do for Gates County. So I prepared very brief remarks that are on the PowerPoint presentation. Our organization was started originally under the USDA in the mid-'70s, and we achieved nonprofit status in the '80s, of which we continue to operate as a 501(c)(3). Our mission focuses on conserving natural resources, protecting the environment while we're also looking at local economic and community development. We represent the 10 counties in northeast North Carolina, and to date, we have completed over 500 local projects within those 10 counties, which represents more than $15 million in grants that we have been involved with either writing or bringing into the region. I thought it would be helpful for just a few current examples. We are in Chalona County, working on a Pembroke Creek Park Improvement Project. The two photos on the left show erosion and boardwalks that had suffered disrepair and flooding in parking areas. We did write a CAMA Public Water Access Grant and are in the process of installing a new boardwalk, handicap parking. We have canoe and kayak access ramps for individuals with disabilities, and we will be completing that this fall. In Hertford, we were involved in writing three grants that exceeded $100,000 that helped the town of Hertford install a nine-slip marina, which was part of their strategy to attract more tourists to their community. We're currently involved in the Little River Watershed Restoration Project, which we started in partnership with the Alamo Oral Commission, but we are working on several other grant applications in this area to restore the quality of water, to try to monitor and restore the herring that was native in that area. And we're working with local farmers on putting their land into wetlands in order to improve the water quality. For all 10 counties in northeast North Carolina, we were involved in obtaining clearing and snagging funds that's since 2015, but we've really accessed them in 2014, but we've accessed them this year. And the picture down in the corner is an example of the tires that were retrieved as part of that clearing and snagging project in Passotank. In Carroll County, we're in the process of designing a new waterfront park and wrote a grant for CAMA to repair part of the bulkhead, to add piers, fishing ramps, as well as handicap accessible parking and boardwalks. And in Camden, we're working with the high school there to build an outdoor classroom, which is a wetland that also has boardwalk areas that are in connection with the school's science and math classes. This is an area of expertise that we have developed over the years, that we're able to help the school adjust flooding and drainage issues, but also introducing a wetland that will become an outdoor classroom for the school classes. In Gates County, since 1980, we have completed over 30 projects, and those projects brought in $167,000 in grant money and, as you see, $189 in local match. I'm going to start from some of the older ones to the more present, but these are pictures from the Gatesville Camp Park that you see walking trails, boardwalks, and signage. We were involved in the fitness trails and ballparks in the park. The wetland that was built, the sign on the left is showing the before and after, again, a wetland designed to help range and flooding issues. The Gatesville High School Outdoor Environmental Learning Site was constructed -- was completed in 2006 with grants from a variety of agencies, but you see some of the pictures there including with some of the children when it was dedicated. And then the Merchants Mill Pond State Park Campsite was our most recent project in this area. This built three raised camping platforms that included a 300-foot boardwalk to each one of those platforms. It also had three primitive camping platforms built that included picnic tables, fire rings, lantern posts with signage and handicap accessible ramps going with that. And these are just some photos from that project. The lower right is one of the camping, the primitive campsites, and you also see some of the ramps to launch from. Our world changed in 2011 when the federal support that RCD always received was eliminated. And since that time, we have been following three key strategies. We keep our annual county contributions unchanged, depending on what tier our counties are in that has a dollar amount that is associated with it. We do charge fees for grant writing and project development since those activities prior to 2011 have been covered by the federal employee, and we rely on our council members to help us identify new projects in each county. Here in Gates County, we're proudly welcome Joe Carroll and Natalie Roundtree as RCD members. And I understand that tonight you are having your public hearing on your budget, and I'm here to ask your support for the $750 requested of Tier One Counties to help RCD support our operations as we position ourselves to respond to any projects you may have in Gates County. And on behalf of our 28 board members, I thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight, and I would be open to any questions you may have.
Okay, well, thank you for coming. Does anyone have any questions?
I don't even know what to do.
Thank you.
I'm breaking up the count.
Thank you very much.
And certainly we hope that we'll be seeing you in this house soon and we're proud.
There you go. We're here, project. Thank you.
Okay, moving to our Unites Delegations, Earl Roundtree. If you'll please state your name and address.
Yeah, my name is Earl Roundtree, and I live at 226 Polly Road, Sunbury, North Carolina. I make no apologies for coming up here where I've got to say and taking up your time because I feel like I'm paying for this time. Every December, I send a, bring a check in, and I feel like that I have an opportunity in the life to come in here and say things. And Jack, you're probably 100% right because one of my favorite fables was the little boy that cried wolf, and it's a very true story that you can hear the little boy that cried wolf. But I think you and Linda and everybody else would have to admit that you haven't heard from me lately, and so I think that that was no milk. And I'm gonna rush, not rush through it, but I am gonna say an address to the county and to you as commissioners. Shakespeare wrote about the evil that men do lives on. All the good things you do are buried with your bones. Very true statement in many cases. It seems like to me, as I don't live, all my mentors have died off. Maybe you had some, maybe you didn't. Some of these people you may remember, some of them you may not. One of them was Vernon James, State Representative Vernon James. He used to call me up, stop by the house. Vernon lived to be 97 years old, looked at his children at camps and died very young. Phil Gopman, of course, you all know. Bob Jenkins, and I misspelled his name, I don't know where I come up with that name. Bob Jenkins was the president of North Carolina Farm Bureau, and we spent years talking, and Jack was working with Farm Bureau and even Bob Jenkins was president. Another guy was Jack Hawke. All of these people were political knowledge. They were people that you could call. But the interesting thing is that I liked about the fact of having an ego like everybody else, these people actually would call me. I didn't come in here tonight to cry like a baby. I'm not complaining about absolutely nothing tonight, and you can mark that one now, Jack, because people don't like crying babies. And I have come to the conclusion on April the 8th, I was my birthday, and I had birthday done alone. Well, I tell him Billy Felton, Brenda kind of looked at this thing, but I did have two women to take me out to eat that supper when they insisted on paying. I had more money than they did. I didn't want them to buy my meal, but they was wanting to do it. But I was got thinking about the fact that I had probably already lived, certainly no I have, lived all the best part of my life. And when I look back on the fact is that I was really not disappointed. And if I had to say to young people out there, what young as I am, in your life, do things that you're gonna be proud of when you get 73 years old, even though you lose battles. Winning is not all about winning, it's about the game. And when I use that term that I'm talking about in politics, Jack, you don't win all the battles, but you play the game hard to win. I had this late, one of these ladies, Billy, that took me out to eat named Danielle. She's 39 years old. I'm her father figure because she was raised up by a very abusive father. And she tore a lapstone with me. But what I had always noticed about Danielle, she was always laughing, always happy, and always smiling. And one day, we had a conversation about her life and how she was raised up in this abusive home and how her daddy was, and how she had gotten married as a young person and had two children and then got divorced. But she made a point, y'all didn't come to church tonight, but she made a point. She said, "Everything in my life that went bad made me a stronger person." And I'm sure you've heard people say that, but you can either take it for what it is. But I have had a good life, being no smarter than I was, only having $2 or $3 to live off of, and I fell into some luck. And my first luck was the fact, and it said I found this out from my home county people, was the fact that I had made friends with Governor Jim Martin. Him and I met in Sunbury, I bought him a trap dunker that cost $2.75 back then, and it was served on a Styrofoam plate, and this was the guy that was gonna be governor for eight years. And after that, he just sort of, we just became friends. Some of my friends in the county didn't have any, didn't believe that the governor knew who I was, but I found out real quick, and I told Billy and some of the other people I shared real quickly, I remember when he got into office, had been in office only a couple of months, and a guy from Charlestown, North Carolina, North of the county called me up and says, "I got a problem down here." He was a proud one. He said, "We got a problem down here, and I need to see the governor." And I didn't know this guy at all, and he said, "What are you calling me for?" And they said, "Well, I didn't told you the man to call." Well, I didn't even know what to do, so I called the governor's office, and suddenly the governor's staff is on the phone and says, "Well, Earl, when do you want to come?" So, you know, I, I don't wanna tell you, I enjoyed that. And after that, real quick, you know, it sort of worked out kind of funny because I spent six years on the Board of Allocutch. The only Board of Allocutch was a guy, I mean, he went on the Board of Allocutch, worked at Department of Allocutch, Britt Cobb. And Britt and I, Britt was a quiet guy. We always got along, we talked, had some lunches together, didn't know that one day that he was gonna be the chief of staff for Beverly Purdue. And I had Britt Cobb, the Republican Commissioner of Allocutch, and he called me up and said, "Earl, since we looked at the numbers out there in Wilkes County and Davidson County and Ardell County," and said, "Those people out there seem to like you." He said, "Can I use your name?" And that wasn't gonna be politically too correct, really, he was a Democrat, but he was a friend. And as it turned out, he became the chief of staff for Beverly Purdue. Bill Parham was the, came to me, he was a deputy commissioner of Allocutch, and him and I had lunch one day, and he looked at me and he said, "Earl," he said, "Do you realize what, how will you help?" Now, I know this is, you know, this seems kind of ridiculous to y'all, but I said, "I don't know what you're talking about." He was lobbying me because the Department of Allocutch wanted a vote on something to be passed the next day. I mean, that was obvious. I mean, that, Bill and I were friends. And he looked at me and he said, "Do you know what power?" And I said, "I don't think I got any power." He said, "Earl," he says, "The board has never gone against you. So when you made a decision that the board made and you spoke up, they're always, not all of them, but if Martin's gonna need the Republicans," he said, "They're always gonna give way." And I look back on that thing, and so after it was all over with and I left after six years, I had lunch again with Bill Parham, and he said, "Oh, I checked the record, you were there for six years, and you never lost a vote." Well, you take that because I think here in Gates County, I never won a vote. So you need that. And I will share about, real quick, I have Paula Wester down here, and I'm getting toward the end, but talking back to Britt Cobb. Ray Felton called me up and says he wanted Paula Wester to have the Longleaf Pound Award and wanted to know if I would help get it for her. And so I called Britt Cobb, and Ed, son of Ed Jones, was gonna sponsor this thing, and of course, Ed was a great guy. We really lost a great senator when he died because he's one of the best that was up there because he knew how to walk the sideline, and he didn't make anybody mad on either aisle, a great guy. So he says, he told me, he said, "Earl," I said, "I'm gonna recommend this thing," he says, "Is it going through the governor's office?" I said, "I'll let you know in 30 minutes." So I called Britt Cobb up and I told him about what we wanted, and he said, "No, I have any problems, it comes across my desk, it's approved." And it was a done deal, of course. I want to close it saying, having been a part of Gates County politics for 40-some years and having quit several times, Jack, but chairman of the board over in Passotank County, Joe Weslow. And Joe, after my wife died, Joe sent me a long email, but the email basics didn't have anything to do with that, it did the beginning, but he made a point, and Billy's the only one that's heard part of this story anyway, but he made a point. He said, "Earl, since I've always really appreciated your advice." He said, "Because I knew that I could get some good advice by emailing you or giving you a call, and I appreciate all the good advice that you've given me." Well, I didn't know how much of political statements, you know, you've got to kind of look at politicians and, you know, they're gonna say nice things too. But later on, Joe came over here to the visitation, and he told me, he said, "Earl," he said, "You know," and I think y'all can understand this, he said, "I want to tell you something." He said, "People come to Commissioner Dean, and people come to write letters to the editor," and he said, "So many times, away far many times," said, "They don't have a clue what they're talking about." He said, "They don't understand the system, they don't understand politics, and they're just complaining about something." But he said, "I look for absolute fact," and he said, "When you call me up and tell me something that I can count on it being accurate, and it needs to be looked into." And it made me feel good, Jack, because that is the way I have tried to live my whole life. Tonight, 1951, this is the last statement, 1951, I was looking down there seeing who was living, 1951, no one else was living in 1951, some of them don't remember. There were four five-star generals. This is a trivia question, we ain't got time to go into it. I think, no, it was five five-star generals. But anyway, I'm real quick to see if I got all sounders. No, we, I ain't nailed one. But anyway, MacArthur, Eisenhower, Arnold, Marshall, and Omar Bradley, five star generals, the only five that were, if there was. But anyway, 1951, MacArthur made a speech that was very famous, a joint session of Congress, and MacArthur had been fired by the president whose highest ranking in the army had only been captain, and he fired a five-star general. Now, I'm not gonna go into that, but you just think about it, a captain firing a five-star general. But the thing is, guys, I mean, in MacArthur's speech, and you can go online and read the whole speech, thanks to computers, but nobody's gonna do that. For what part of that one speech that most people that follow it still remember? Old soldiers never die, they just fade away. Well, fade away, Jack.
Earl, you'll never fade away. We'll expect to see you again soon. Okay, being no one else, that is on the signup list. We will move to court public hearings. If we will have a motion to go into public hearing.
Salute. Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to enter into a public hearing to consider two items that be scheduled. We're going to do them separate, okay? We'll do the fee schedule, all those in, we're gonna get it straight. We're going in a public hearing for the fee schedules for this year. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Okay, I believe we had that in our packet. If you will look, the fee schedule that has been presented for county, all county work. Anyone have comments on the fee schedule, fees and fines? Hearing, no comments. Do I hear a motion to come out of public hearing?
Salute.
Motion has been made and seconded to come out of public hearing concerning the fee. All those in favor, say aye. All opposed.
Madam Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Is that be scheduled on our website?
This was the one that was handed out to you last week, you're the one that made it.
It will be when it's passed.
Just wanted to make a note, I think we have a lot of systems here tonight that, we're not hearing any comment on it. We've discussed it several times, I know they have heard that, so just wanna say for the camera and for public that.
It was, it was listed.
Yeah, it has been up there, final fee schedule will be up there.
Yes. Okay. Okay, we did not vote on. Oh, yes, we did. Okay, I will entertain a motion to approve the fee schedule.
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
I think we deliberated on the fee schedule presented to us by planning director and county manager to look that over, and I'll move that we set the fee schedule that presented to us.
Motion has been made, do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded, any discussion?
Any changes to the, I'm not sure, just forget.
Yes, sir, the changes are in red or highlighted depending on which project you have. So there were no changes to the zoning fees.
Probably did have some discussions on, if you would take a look at those. Okay, right.
Any additional discussion?
I'd like to know if at a later date, any changes would have to have a public hearing?
This would be incorporated to the budget for next year, so it would take place during
Okay, a motion is on the floor, this is seconded, we had a discussion. Any additional discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Okay, fee schedule is adopted. Do I hear a motion to, entering into public hearing on the 2015-2016 budget?
Move that we go into public hearing.
Motion has been made and seconded that we go into a public hearing for the budget. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Okay, now we are in public hearing. If anyone would like to make comments. If you will come to the podium, state your name and address.
Yes, my name's Mickey Lee. My address is 201 Perkins Road, Gatesville, North Carolina. My family and I have been here approximately 30 years in Gates County in our home. We have raised three children, and they all went through their We have raised three children, and they all went through the education system here, and they all went on to East Carolina. I have a daughter that went on to law school, and you know how lawyers are, it's not here either. Anyway, she thinks she's the smartest child that I have. My boys would debate that with her. But I just wanted to say that you folks have a tough job, and I know that. I would hate to see our schools go lacking in the things they need. One of the most important things we can do for the future of this county is to offer our children the best education that we can give them. It takes money to do that, and I know money does not go on cruise. But I am asking you to keep that first and foremost in your mind as you pass this budget. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else, public hearing?
Aye. I'm Kristy Stevens. My address is fifty-eight Reynoldson Road, Gates, North Carolina, two seven nine three seven. I am a teacher for Gates County Schools. I have been teaching in Gates County for thirteen years. I am also a Gates County product. I graduated schools, I went through all of our schools, and I am a product of Gates County Schools. Our superintendent has asked for more money. I would like to ask you to support what he has asked. First of all, Gates County, when you're driving around, you don't see a whole lot. The schools are the heart of our county. The schools are what makes Gates County, Gates County. It makes us what we are. We need the extra money that he has asked for, so that our schools can stay excellent schools that they are. The second reason I'm here to ask for the extra money is because we do have the correct people in place now. We have an excellent superintendent, we have an excellent curriculum director in place. We have not been a leader in education in Region One, because people haven't been coming for us to ask questions. They've been coming, but not as much as other places. We need this extra funding so that all of our programs and our teachers can remain the same. We ask that you support him and you support us, so that our schools can continue to be excellent school system and educate the children, because a lot of the product that comes from Gates County Schools stays in Gates County. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, my name's Darlene Monday. I'm not a good speaker, I don't know nobody. I moved to this community about ten years ago. I moved to this community because I rode around, I loved the area, I loved the people, the people were the friendliest people I've ever met. I moved from Virginia Beach, Virginia, lived in Chesapeake, Virginia all my life, grew up in Chesapeake, grew up in the Chesapeake Public School System. I took both my children out of private school to put into your school system. I have no children in your school system right now. I do have a first-year teacher. My children went to school here, both my children graduated from here, both my children went to college. I think I did pretty good. One of them became a sheriff's deputy, one of them is a first-year school teacher. My oldest went away to college to Michigan, got an education in Michigan. Couldn't stay in Michigan, he made a lot more money in Michigan than he knew. Wasn't an area that he could have got a job. Came back to Gates County because this was his love. Came to Gates County to teach because this was his first choice. He was offered other positions, turned them down in hopes to get into Gates County School Systems. Got into Gates County School Systems, loves teaching at Gates County High School. Spends a lot of time there. Some nights he doesn't come home, I don't know what he's doing. Some nights he's not home till seven o'clock at night. If he's actually there, spending that much time at school, if he was even getting paid minimum wage, he'd be making more than he's making, I'm sure. But he loves your school system, loves the children, loves the area. Could go to another area, doesn't wanna go to another area. Me, if he went to another area, I have a empty nest, doesn't make a difference to me. I just really hate to see the children in this area lack for education. In today's world, it's hard enough just to make ends meet, just to go on and do something else, rather than have a bad education, or to be lacking in teachers where you're gonna have a lot more students in a classroom. Just consider the children. Like I said, I have a child in school, so it really doesn't make a difference to me. He could go somewhere else and teach, I'm sure. But just consider the children. It's a wonderful area, I love the area, I love the people. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who'd like to speak?
Good evening. My name's Leslie Barham, and my address is nine forty-three E. Conneal Road, Pass, North Carolina. Please apologize for my parents. I've been vomiting today, and I just did neck injury. But I come here as a board member, and also as a taxpayer and a parent. I have had two children who are products of the Gates County School System. They have graduated. I believe they're doing really well, they could do better if they wanted to. But that's their choice. But you can only leave them in one direction, and hopefully they'll do the best. The biggest problem that I see that our system in Gates County is suffering is that we have a numerous amount of teachers that are retiring in the system, that have been in the system for several years. Ms. Hoffel, you're a sample, you're still at as a substitute teacher at the high school, and I thank you for that, I really do. But we do have a lot of teachers now that are one-year tenure, two-year tenure. And we all know that tenure is up in the air, and the state legislatures are constantly battling back and forth as to what to do. And you all know that we have, as a board, we signed the resolution to rip, if possible, because we have to have X number of days to notify the employees. I'm very happy and proud to say that I serve our board, because we really scrutinize and we are very creative with our funding, and we work very hard by funding. I know there are other departments within the system of Gates County that do need money, and I just ask that you sharpen your pens and be very creative when it comes to the school system. We are the largest employee in the county, and I can tell you that we have had some excellent teachers. We have some excellent new teachers, too, and we still have some excellent teachers that have been in the system. So, anything that you could do would be greatly appreciated, not only from me as a board member, but also as a taxpayer and a parent in the school system here, and also a citizen of Gates County. Thank you for taking the time.
Thank you, Mr. Barham. Anyone else? I wish my classroom had been this wide. No one else wants the opportunity to speak? I will entertain a motion to come out of public hearing.
So moved. Second.
Motion has been made, is seconded, to exit the public hearing on budget. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. I do, I would like to say, we do appreciate you coming. This has been a very difficult year for all of us. Everybody has, everybody's mad at us. I think we have our equal opportunity and anger from all departments, because most of, most of them have taken a hit, favor for production. Education was one that was not reduced. So, you know, it's just been a tough year. But we're, I practically listened to the General Assembly on Friday, they announced that they were returning funding for textbooks, which will be helpful to us. Hopefully, they will continue to add some more money to the pot. And I think Dr. Williams and the Board of Education, we have discussed about some of the long-range projects that we're going to meet with your board in the near future concerning that. And so, you know, that's kind of what we can say at this point. Okay. Okay, moving on. Would anyone like to take a minute for it? Okay, okay, moving on to the agenda. Old business, we have some, oh, vote on, I thought we voted in, in the first meeting in June. We had a public hearing tonight, and we voted first meeting in June. Okay, moving on to ring number six, old business. Appointment to the planning board, there is a vacancy on that. Do I hear any nominations?
Madam Chairman, I'd like to nominate Ronald Taylor to the planning board.
Okay, a motion has been made to nominate Ronald Taylor. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion has been made, is seconded, on that. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor of Russell Taylor becoming a member of the planning board for his first three-year term, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Okay, and Mrs. Lawrence, if you will notify him, I believe there is a meeting tomorrow. Okay, appointment to the Board of Adjustments. Just to clarify, Ken Jernikin was appointed at our last meeting in the documentation we held. Okay, moving to new business, a budget amendment. Ms. Pittman.
Good evening.
Good evening, Trudy.
We just have one budget amendment, and this is from the Water Department, actually from Water and Sewer Department. Timmy says he has spoken with Deere and suggested that we have separate equipment, obviously, for the Water and Sewer Departments. I believe they have tractors, or a tractor that they've been sharing between those two systems, and they've been sanitizing, you know, as they do back and forth. And at Deere's recommendation, he's asked for an amendment to provide money to purchase a tractor to be specifically for the sewer system, and to be used in the spray booths and such. So, this amendment is using additional revenues that we have already received and allocating it to purchase this tractor.
Okay, as you can see, it comes from his, this year's budget that we're currently in.
Yes.
And just a transfer of funds from one area money to another area.
Madam Chairman, I move that we approve the budget amendment for us, and I'll second that motion, Madam Chairman.
Okay, a motion has been made, and is seconded, that we approve the amendment for the Water Department to purchase a tractor. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Thank you. Okay, something that has come for us each year for the last several is a resolution of the North, of the North Carolina, of the veterans, of status, to give veteran status to World War II Coastwide Merchant Marines. It's been through us, we have passed it the last couple of years. They would like for us to pass it again. Representative Butterfield and Representative Walter Jones are introducing that in the House of Representatives once again, with additional documentation this time, to try, because there had been some concerns on like who would be qualified to obtain this status, and looking at those issues. That information was in your packet. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
A motion has been made for us to approve the resolution in support of giving veteran status to World War II Coastal Merchant Marines. Do I hear a second?
Second.
A motion has been made, is seconded, any discussion?
Yes, ma'am, just to clarify, some of the studies that we made, these merchant Marines were responsible for developing and supplying arms, armor, and what have you, and many of them were killed by submarine activity off the coast.
And if you do read the documentation, there were men, women, children, handicapped individuals who took place in this. Okay, a motion has been made, is seconded, any additional discussion? Time is running out on these folks, too. I think, I, somewhere they said, how many were?
One hundred ninety-two.
That's right. At one time, it was ninety-one guys. Hearing, if our discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. We'll send our resolution. Okay, May, of course, is the proclamation for older Americans. And we have a proclamation for that as well. Ms. Owens, I see that you have it, would you care to read it?
Older Americans Month, two thousand fifteen, a proclamation. Whereas Gates County includes a thriving community of older Americans who deserve recognition for their contributions and sacrifices to ensure a better life for future generations, and whereas Gates County is committed to helping all individuals live longer and healthier lives in the communities of their choice for as long as possible. And whereas, since nineteen sixty-five, the Older Americans Act has provided services to help other adults remain healthy and independent, by complementing existing medical and healthcare systems, helping prevent hospital readmissions, and supporting some of life's most basic functions, such as bathing or preparing meals. And whereas, these programs also support family caregivers, address issues of exploitation, neglect, and abuse of older adults, and adapt services to the needs of Native American elders. And whereas, we recognize the value of community engagement and service in helping other older adults remain healthy and active while giving back to others. And whereas, our community can provide opportunities to enrich the lives of individuals of all ages by promoting and engaging in activity, wellness, and social inclusion, emphasizing home and community-based services that support independent living, ensuring community members of all ages benefit from the contributions and experience of older adults. Now therefore, we of Gates County do hereby proclaim May, two thousand fifteen, to be Older Americans Month. We urge every resident to take time this month to celebrate older adults and the people who serve and support them as powerful and vital individuals who greatly contribute to the community, dated this eighteenth day of May, two thousand fifteen.
Okay, proclamation for older Americans. Certainly, we owe them a big thank you and a gratitude for all that they have done and are still doing in our communities. Do I hear a proclamation, a motion for this proclamation?
Madam Chairman, I'll make a motion to adopt proclamation for Older Americans Month, recognition, what I want to make.
Okay, a motion has been made, I hear a second.
Second.
Motion has been made, and properly seconded, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Okay, this must be our resolution month. We also have a resolution. We also have a resolution approving the Northeast Workforce Development Consortium Agreement. This really is just a name change agreement. We've been, this is part of the Alamo Commission, Commissioner Jordan has been on that board, I'm on that board right at current time, and it's, because the act has changed, the Workforce Innovation and Opportunities Act, and they have to have a, this is new set.
Right, well, the Alamo Commission board, I think you've served a vote on consortium, but they made it separate now. And I think you'd have considered this team service?
Yes, because it's, they're both on the same nights, it's just one rag. The consortium has always been separate, it's always been comprised of one person, one elected official from each of the ten counties. And as Ms. Hoffler said, this is a new federal law change that changed the name from Workforce Investment Act to the Workforce Development, Workforce Innovation Opportunity Act, and it takes effect July 1st, 2015. And they do need this consortium agreement approved by all ten counties. And then, as you recommended, Commissioner Jordan, that Chair Hoffler continued to serve because they are asking for a member to also be appointed.
Chairman, if you would like to continue serving, I can forward my service, I'll make you continue.
Well, you know, I'm already in Hartford, just had to go an hour early. I'll take one for the team. Okay, a motion has been made and seconded to approve this Northeast Workforce Development Consortium Agreement. Yes.
Where, the motion for you to serve?
I was trying to get out that.
You have to approve the resolution first.
Resolution first, and then you can inform.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution.
Okay, motion has been made to approve the resolution and seconded.
Seconded.
Seconded. Okay, so we're putting foot on approving the Northeast Workforce Development Consortium Agreement. Any discussion?
No discussion, but in addition, they certainly support all the chambers in Gates County and very active with the chambers.
That is true, and I know we've had individual businesses in our community that can take advantage of this service, Brooklyn Hardware, for instance, and various others. Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, Mr. Jordan, do you have any other motions?
Yes, Chairman, I would, Lieutenant Hoffman would serve on the consortium as our representative of the board.
Okay, a motion has been made to appoint me to be this consortium member of Gates County. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? I'm tempted to say no. Okay, moving right along. Oh, we need to have a commissioner appointed to the Mental Health Regional Advisory Board. And Mr. Freeman, Commissioner Freeman, aren't you on that board?
Yes, ma'am, I've been attending those studies and for behavioral science in Williamson for county representatives.
And those of you, there has been a change in the structure of that, and so this is why we talked about, we bid for the reorganization last month, or at the first of this month. Now we need to appoint a member. Do I hear a motion to appoint Mr. Freeman back to that board?
So moved.
Motion has been made and properly seconded. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? E R, new business. Okay. Do we have citizens' comments? Have you got any comments from our county manager?
No, ma'am, I will give you an update very quickly on the district court house because that was questioned last week when we met briefly for budgets. Spoken with Ms. Sasse and she hopes to have us a report by the end of the month. And it was also included in your packet, the Tri-City Animal Shelter Update as maybe eleven.
Okay, commissioners' comments will start at the end of the table, Commissioner Freeman, and we'll come this way.
Comments to our, certainly our citizens who are attendance and involved. We are certainly committed to you and we appreciate what you bring to us. Our decisions are based upon those recommendations and other things that come to us. Also, I'd like to thank all of our citizens for supporting the most recent wounded warrior event that we had and in Gates County, and that will be the fourth next year. If all goes well, we'll have our fifth. And with the support of Community Center, Mickey Lee, who's out here right now, and others within the community who supported us both financially as well as providing personnel. Citizens of Gates County, our hunters provided turkey hunting for wounded warriors and has been invited since then.
Thank you all for attending. It's mighty good to look out there and see a good group of people out here today, and I think I'll take this opportunity to get on a soapbox just a moment. We want to have a representative from our trash collection, our recycling process, come to talk with us and hopefully all of you sometime in the near future. And just something that seems very mundane, but if you remember to recycle, that's one thing to bring money back to the county. We have to pay for all our trash, but we get paid for our recycling. But just thank you all for coming, it's very good to see you right here, thank you.
I do thank everyone for being here tonight to show your interest in what we're doing, the decisions we make that affect the county, our students. And I follow in line. And I do take great pride in being elected to represent our people in Gates County, and I do hear you citizens, my citizens. And so, when you contact me, when you speak, I hear you, and certainly you want to try to do the best for everyone in the county, veteran county.
Well, thank everyone for coming. I do want you, the teachers and educational administration people who are here tonight, I think that you should be holding your heads very high in the product that you put out in the form of our students. I mean, there are countless students that we could name, that you could name, that any of us up here could name, that have done great things and will continue to do great things. And we see those examples of students, of the teachers here that have gone through the system, Christie, like you stated, we're very proud of that. And we're also proud of when we go somewhere, to another county or to the state or whatever, and we say something about Gates County. One of the things we hear about, y'all have a great school system there, so I want you to be proud of that, and we should be. So that's something that we hear a lot of places we go. We had some difficult decisions. Our county manager approached the staff here at the courthouse and all the things that she's responsible for on the budget, and asked them to dig real deep to the extent of 10%, to cut their departments by 10%. So we want you to know that, that they dealt with some difficult things, and we dealt with some difficult things on numerous afternoons and nights and through phone calls. But that's what this job entails, you know. We took this job on, we were selected by the citizens, and we do listen, we do hear what the public says. And again, I just want to reiterate that we have agreed to meet on some capital projects that the superintendent has shared with us. So we're not going to close the door on anything. We are here to support and be a vital part of that product that you're turning out. On another matter, we said that the month of May was Older Citizens Month. I sort of hesitate to say this, but I think I'm going to say it anyway. We are the only county in North Carolina, the only county in North Carolina does not have a senior center. So we have to do something about that. We addressed that earlier in the month. We have agreed to do some research in that. I want you to follow that in our, come into our meetings. When you hear something about that, we want to hear your input on that. That is a title that we want to do away with. Don't know how soon that will happen, but when we hear something like that, it's something that we want to address. So we thank you for coming, we thank you for your participation.
I too want to say thank you for coming, it's nice to see. Hopefully, you all still calling me a friend of education. You know, it is a tough job. You have a tough job in education, and this has been a tough job for us this year with the budget. As you well know, there's so many unfunded mandates that were being handed down to us. DSS Medicaid, they cut $150,000 last year and now $150,000 this year. Doesn't sound like a lot of money, but for a county like Gates County, that is a lot of money. And next year, it's $200,000, I believe that we're getting to. Additional $150,000. So that's, we have $450,000, but we have to make up some way. It has just been a very tough year, and as Commissioner Owens has said, we, you know, most of the departments took at least a 10% cut in that. Just been very, very tough. And we have, we will hear you. We are all, most of us, I think four by five, are products of Gates County Public School System. I spent my entire career at the high school. I know the hours you put in, and I appreciate all you do each and every day. I just wish I had a lunch tree in the backyard that we could go collect some money all the way. But, you know, we're going to try to be creative, we're going to try to think outside the box. I think we have talked to the Board of Education and Dr. Williams about trying to think outside the box on some of these things, and that we're going to have joint meetings several times a year to try and come up with some solutions. And we're just hoping that Riley comes up with some more money. If you notice, they have a $400 surplus that they have found, and hopefully some of that will go to education as well, or to the seniors' center that we may be fit, or at least start that discussion on that, as Mr. Jordan has said. But we are working, we are looking at different avenues and trying to do the best we can for you, for our seniors. We appreciate all you have done, and, you know, like I said, the seniors' center probably won't happen this year, but certainly we could maybe start planning and seeing about getting some funding down the road for that. But, you know, we hear you, we do the best we can, and feel free to call. I know all of the commissioners listen to your calls, we return your calls. I make an effort to stop and talk to you, anyone who wants to talk about county business, and we will continue to do that. We are here to serve you, and we try to do the best we can. And thank you once again for coming. And new business, we are going to be adjourned. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
A motion has been made and seconded to adjourn, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Do I get to hit them?